Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of July 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Gandisberry.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock. Absent. Councilmember Montoya.
Present.
Councilmember Grant.
Present.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Blodgett.
Present.
Councilmember Dixon.
Present.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
All right, and will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one on the agenda is proclamation, a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of July 2025 as Waters Worth It Month in the City of Norman. I entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and acknowledged receipt passes unanimously.
Okay, a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of July 2025 as Waters Worth It Month in the City of Norman, whereas Waters Worth It Month is being promoted by the Environmental Control Advisory Board to help increase community awareness of Norman's most precious natural resource, and whereas Waters Worth It is a campaign by the Water Environment Federation to help answer questions about how our actions, attitudes, and the things we most value are closely connected with water, and whereas Waters Worth It Month is one of the many ways to help promote the protection of Norman's water by increasing educational efforts, by including educational posts on various social media and electronic platforms, information in newspaper, and literature showing citizens how to conserve and protect water, and whereas Waters Worth our respect, communities are built on water, and whereas Waters Worth our effort, clean water is everyone's responsibility, and whereas Waters Worth our health, water is life, and whereas Waters Worth our future, dealing with an aging infrastructure, and whereas Waters Worth our passion as we look for innovative solutions for conserving water in times of abundance, and whereas the protection and conservation of Norman's water improves the quality of life by having, by having a cleaner and more abundant supply of water now and in the future, and reduces the cost of water and wastewater treatment. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Waters Worth It Month and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to become knowledgeable and acquaint themselves with the problems involved in maintaining safe water. And we have Michelle Laden back with staff here to accept this proclamation.
I'm very excited to introduce Eileen Grisbowski. She's one of our E-Cab members, and she has some words to share.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Environmental Control Advisory Board, we're honored to accept this important proclamation declaring July as Waters Worth It Month here in our city. This proclamation serves as a powerful reminder of the vital role clean water plays in our lives and our shared responsibility to protect our lakes, streams, and watersheds. Water sustains us in ways we often overlook. It nourishes our bodies, provides habitat for wildlife, and gives us places to swim, to fish, and to relax. When we care for our water, we care for our health, our community, and our future. Naturalist John Muir once wrote, "When we try to pick out anything by itself, we find it hitched to everything else in the universe." His words remind us that every action, big or small, ripples through our environment. What we do in our homes, our yards, our neighborhoods, matters for the health of our waters. As the 2025 proclamation so powerfully states, water is worth our respect, our effort, our health, our future, and our passion. This year, we are especially called to find innovative ways to conserve water in times of abundance and to embrace solutions that adapt to a changing climate. Protecting Norman's water isn't just about drought, flooding, or crisis response. It's about building long-term resilience and a sustainable future for our community. Fortunately, there are many simple practices that we can adopt to make a positive impact. We can fix leaks and install water-efficient appliances to reduce waste. We can water plants early in the morning or late in the evening to reduce evaporation. We can choose eco-friendly cleaning products and safely dispose of our chemicals at Norman's household hazardous waste facility so that they don't end up in our waterways. We can limit the use of fertilizers and pesticides and always pick up after pets, especially near creeks and storm drains. Most importantly, as Norman citizens, we can stay informed and get involved. When we understand how our water system works, we can better protect it. This Saturday, July 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, we are proud to celebrate Waters Worth It and Lakes Appreciation Month with a signature event at The Well located at 210 James Garner Avenue. Habitat and All That is a family-friendly event featuring educational and hands-on activities like seed bomb making and watershed games. Local experts will speak at 11:00 about native landscaping, our wild neighbors, and ways to get involved. In closing, we would like to thank our Honorable Mayor and City Council members for recognizing the value of water in our community and supporting this month of awareness and action. Let's make this July a time to reflect, to learn, and to recommit caring for the water that cares for us, because water truly is worth it. Thank you.
All right, next up is council announcements, and we'll start at Ward 1.
Hello, Ward 1. It's been nice to get to know you last couple of weeks and everything and getting to meet some new friendly faces and not-so-friendly faces. For my announcements, first and foremost, I want to thank the Norman Police Department, Fire Department, and our Parks and Rec Department for a great 4th of July celebration. Nice and safe. Some weather helped us and everything like that also, but it was a job well done with no instance that I heard of making big headlines or anything like that, so it's always a good day at work when that happens. Second off, I'd like to say that to kind of get to know each other in my ward, I plan on hopefully by the end of this month announcing a meeting Greek Day for everybody where we can meet in public places and stuff. Also, I am a member of CPAN, which is the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, and I just got taken over the lead role of their Adopt a Street program, so I'll be reaching out to Ward 1 probably around the 18th of this month. The Ward, uh, the CPAN operates Adopt a Street from Alameda from 12th to 24th Street on the east side, so right there in the middle of our ward and everything, so I'm gonna get the organization together and the ward together for a day out to clean up our Alameda Street. That's all I got.
Ward 2 is not here tonight. Ward 3?
Good evening, everyone. I have no announcements tonight.
Ward 4?
Good evening, Ward 4 in City of Norman. First, I want to say happy 10th birthday to Oil and Clay Studio. Stop by the Standard 315 East Gray to cheers with owners Nora Hall and Luisa Brewer-Glass at Second Friday Art Walk. Celebrate by reminiscing through years of photos documenting their journey from garage studio to east downtown location on Main Street and to their current space within the Standard. Revelers can enjoy a free craft shop, studio goods, and cheers with a champagne toast. So, congrats again, and here's to another decade of oil and clay evolving and thriving in downtown Norman. Next, there is Uncanny Art Hang Exhibition. That gallery is at 106 East Main. They will be celebrating the creative community that has grown through their ongoing art hangs. Attendees can expect a curated collection of work from emerging and established local artists, interactive elements in a welcoming, all-ages atmosphere, artist conversations and community connections, light refreshments and good vibes. Whether you're an art lover, a past art hang attendee, or someone just discovering Norman's vibrant creative scene, this is the night to celebrate with community-grown creativity. So, that will be our art walk this Friday, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. There's plenty more to check out that night, but I just really wanted to put out the ones emphasizing on community building. Since we heard from the Norman Youth Council that we, the Norman City Council, should support our activities for all ages to improve mental health outcomes and build confidence in kids, I'd like to spotlight July as Equality Club instructor and activity. Jenna Bryan, a printmaking instructor and downtown business owner at Oscillator Press, will be teaching a zine-making workshop. Zines are mini booklets that are a great way to express yourself through doodles, comics, collages, writing, curated playlists of songs, movies, books, or poems. This event happens Sunday, July 13th, just before International Non-Binary Day on July 14th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Firehouse Art Center, that's 444 South Flood, for the Firehouse Equality Club. They meet once a month to provide a welcoming space for T2SLGPTQIA+ individuals, their families, and allies where they share experiences and create art with a rotating roster of instructional artists. It is free to participate in class, is, this class is in, sorry, can't talk tonight, collaboration with the Norman Pride and sponsored by the Huffnagle Family. You can RSVP at NormanFirehouse.com/Firehouse-Equality-Club. Thank you.
Okay, Ward 5?
No nonsense this week, thank you.
Ward 6?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say a special thank you to all the city staff that made the Independence Day Festival last week possible and to all of the Norman residents that came out for what looked to be a very packed park. And I'm sure that there were lots of people from surrounding communities that came and enjoyed that with us too, so thank you, everyone, and I hope everyone made it home safe.
Ward 7?
Hello, Norman. I just have one thing to say. I wanted to thank the Parks and Rec Department, so thank you, Jason, and to your people for quickly getting our, the neighbor, my neighborhood park, our cover back on our neighborhood. So, I'm part of a Facebook group for my neighborhood, and everyone was so excited, so I wanted to give you a shout out for that. Thank you.
Ward 8?
Believe it or not, no announcements for Ward 8.
And I would just also echo the compliments about Fourth Fest at Reeves Park. It was really wonderful. I think there were so many people there. We didn't have enough food trucks, probably. There were so, there was long lines, but that was good, and it looked like everybody had a really wonderful time, and I appreciate staff and everybody who helped put that on. And then also would encourage everybody to attend the art walk this Friday in downtown Norman, as Councilmember Grant was talking about some of the events, but there's many wonderful events that are worth visiting downtown on this Friday evening. And then also wanted to mention the Griffin Silo Art Project, not unveiling, but ribbon-cutting, I guess, this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. at Griffin Park. The big old grain silos there have been just plain painted white for several years, and now they have two big murals, one on each side, so it's very impressive, and everybody's encouraged to come out to Griffin Park on Thursday and check that out at 10 o'clock. So, that's all the announcements I have for this week. Okay? All right, then we'll move on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items 2 through item 22, with the exception of item 19, be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items 2 through 22, with the exception of item 19, on the consent docket.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items 2 through 22, with the exception of item 19, on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place items 2 through 22, with the exception of 19, on the consent docket, passes unanimously.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
Motion.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Not seeing any, okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Been cast, and the consent docket, consent docket is approved unanimously.
All right, item 19 is a purchase and sale agreement contract with Golden Twins LLC for purchase of Lot 1 in Block 1 of Triad Edition, Section 8, in the amount of $400,000, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute any documents on behalf of the City of Norman to effectuate the agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? This is an oper, Councilmember Gansberry.
Okay. I made the, I guess I made the, turned, turned in the request to the team and everything to take item 19 off of consent for tonight's meeting and everything due to a public event that was held and everything with concerns.
Okay, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
We do have a few. Mayor, we'll start with Mayumi Windler.
Okay.
Hello, Mayumi Windler, Ward 2. I'm never first for these things. This is just weird. Okay, so this is just for the land. What about for actually developing the land? Or does that money come from, I don't know. I mean, I know it's supposed to be for the supportive housing, like how many units are gonna be on this land, like in this little thing here? It doesn't say how big this lot is, so what are the possibilities for, you know, what is gonna go there? Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Catherine Long.
Catherine Long, Ward 2. I didn't expect to be so soon, so I didn't get a chance to rehearse a whole speech in my head, so y'all are really lucky. I just want to encourage you to support this measure. One of the ongoing conversations in Norman is a significant lack of affordable housing units. I think we're about 9,000 units short in Norman of affordable housing. This is not a homeless shelter. This is housing for people who need it and who will benefit from it. I want to commend you all on the location. As some of you may have been tortured by me in conversations about our city bus system. I ride our buses a lot. This location is in a very close proximity to three bus stops for Bus Route 111, which is a tremendous route, which gets people where they need to go. I think this is a fabulous opportunity for people to have safe and secure housing in a location that will allow them to live, work, and play and be a member of our community. We need this. We really, really need this, and I want to say, as a resident of Ward 2, I, I did message my councilperson and say that I would love for us to find an opportunity to build something like this in my ward as well. So, I, I'm not supporting it because it's not in my backyard. I would love to have this in my backyard. Thank you.
Karen Cannavan.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Karen Cannavan. I've been the executive director with the Norman Housing Authority for about 38 years, and for the past several years, Lisa Craig and I have been looking for suitable location for single-room occupancy-type apartment community. I had the opportunity to go out to Wyndham and visit with some of the residents out there. I found them all very passionate about what their needs are, and I think they need to be heard, but I do believe this project and the location of it is perfect. It is not a good location for a shelter. It is a great location for an apartment community, which is what it will be, a small apartment community with leases that have to be adhered to, rules that have to be followed, and we have been needing this for many, many years. You know, quite often, people are saying the homeless this and the homeless that. They're painting a lot of people with a very, very broad stroke. Not all people will qualify to live in a property such as this one. They will have to be screened, they'll have to be determined suitable, and they'll have to follow leases. And also, just the word homeless seems to give it such a negative concept, and it's not. Many years ago, when bridges used to be called independent living services for youth, when that concept first came up, a lot of Norman community people thought, oh my gosh, it's a bunch of kids that will not follow the rules or just going to party and do drugs and tear the place up. I was honored to be able to lease the first kids into that property. It is now known as a very beloved program. Remember, those kids were homeless. The word homeless does not mean they are people without desires or ambitions. There are people that I'm aware of that have stayed at the shelter in Norman, a 50-plus-year-old lady who slept there at the shelter and got up in the morning and went to work. She needed some help. She still needs help, to my understanding. There are many individuals who qualify in that situation. The word homeless needs to be not a broad stroke, but look at the individuals and how those individuals fit into our community, and I believe this complex is going to be an astounding, astounding addition to the Norman community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan Dunn.
Hi, council. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I don't, I, I think this is a great plan. I would just recommend that in the development of it, that we incorporate some more sustainable features, solar water heaters, community gardens. These types of things can enhance people's well-being and make it more successful.
Thank you.
Next, we have Heidi Smith.
Heidi Smith, Ward 5. I am also work at Thunderbird Clubhouse. We're the collaborative applicants. We're the administrative lead agency for the continuum of care, which is that collaboration of agencies which are directly responsible for helping resource those who are experiencing homelessness. And I, people often ask, how do you end homelessness? SROs are how you end homelessness. So, very often, people want perfect. This may be perfect, but it may not. It's gonna affect people in our, in our community. However, we cannot let perfect be the enemy of progress. This is a project that has been going on for years. It's not like this is the first site. This has been a project that has been worked on by the city for, I think, two and a half years? Three years. The other thing I would like to mention is this is not just a community. It's permanent supportive housing. It is not a shelter. These are people who are screened, who have individual units, and the part of this that has not been mentioned so far is it has case management with it. There are people that will be there on the property, making sure people are getting the supportive services they need to become productive members of our community. I would also like to point out that people who are experiencing homelessness are much more likely to be victims of crime. They're much more likely, much more vulnerable, much more vulnerable to dying on the streets than other populations. Homelessness needs SROs. We need affordable housing. We need desperately low-income affordable housing. So, if we, as a community, are going to stand and say, we actually do want to move the needle on homelessness, we have got to push through projects like this. Thank you.
Lee Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Lee Hall, and I live in Ward 4. First of all, my sincere congratulations to Mayor Holman, Councilmember Gandisberry, Councilmember Blodgett, on being sworn in last Tuesday night, and my best wishes to the rest of the council as you all begin another term. I appreciate every one of you and your willingness to continue to serve our community. I'm here tonight as a member of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Policy Committee that is comprised of residents who volunteer their time to work with Lisa Craig to address a variety of housing issues, including the growing number of units needed for our neighbors in Norman that are classified as affordable. The latest number is 9,400 units needed for those in our community who are considered rent-burdened. Our committee helps develop the five-year consolidated plan that Ms. Craig presents to you on an annual basis and the associated budget. It has taken over two years of effort on the part of Ms. Craig to identify suitable sites for a housing type that currently does not exist in Norman. In this instance, we have had sources of funding identified for some time, but it's taken the work and effort of Ms. Craig to continue working diligently with property owners to get to the place that we are tonight. Permanent supportive housing is a housing type that has been needed in Norman for many years. It's considered transitional housing for residents who need support or assistance as needed and to, to be stably housed. This site will be close to a bus stop and a grocery store, two very important considerations for future residents. Approving the contract tonight is an important first step to begin the due diligence that is needed as the council considers all aspects of this project as it moves through the process. The CDBG Policy Committee fully supports bringing this type of permanent-supporting housing to Norman and are grateful to Ms. Craig for all of the work that she's done for several years now to get us to this point tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I just would like to clarify. There's a few people that signed up for Ms. Lane's discussion, but I want to make sure there wasn't confusion and that you were sign, you thought you were signing up to speak on this item, and that's Nancy Ashton. Veronica, you're Nancy, right. The others are Veronica Hawkins and David DeVilla.
I'm speaking tonight regarding this site. First of all, we just found out yesterday that the city's putting a site on there. Evidently, there's been a whole group of citizens working on this that know all about what's planned for Triad Village Drive. This is the second site that we have found out this way. Once it showed up on the city agenda, we knew nothing about it before. And I'm not here to speak about the homeless. This is about us. This is about the people that live where these developments are going in, and nobody has talked about us. I feel like there's just been a great deception going on over picking this site. There have been, we met with the city, and thank you for coming out yesterday. We don't have answers. We don't know, I don't know, the project seems to be morphing every time we talk about something. We have 300 units there. There are 300 families that live right there where these two sites are going in. And, yeah, there's not going to be any crime, there's not going to be any problems. And I'm not saying everybody is criminal. They're taking our green space, they're taking, you know, there's going to be problems. There's going to be problems. These homeless people have problems. We, I live in a community with 54 units of seniors, blind people, and people, 70, 90-year-olds that walk their dogs. It was suggested yesterday that maybe we should create a homeowners' association. And when we report crimes, they'll show up as dots on a map at the Norman Police Department. And that way, we'll get more patrols to come by. We didn't ask for that. I just wanted to say, I've been, had conversations with Ms. Craig. And this is, they completed an environmental assessment, a study to determine the impacts on our neighborhood, and this is what the city said. "The proposed development will introduce formerly homeless individuals into the area, potentially altering the local demographic makeup. It will transform an unused parcel into a vibrant residential community, a vibrant residential community, contributing to the local housing supply without disrupting the livelihoods of existing community members." That's without talking to the existing community members. The project site is located in an urban area with a diverse population, including significant low-income and minority groups. And I've had so many conversations, and I keep hearing, "You live in low-income housing, there's food and shelter owns two condominiums right next door." We have a voice, and we're not going to be disrespected. The truth is, these projects are going to create an incurable defect in our location. The availability of senior housing is scarce, and these projects will render these 54 units unsuitable in addition to the other 245 units on Triad Village Drive. I feel like this site was selected because it's out of sight, out of mind. I don't know, the bus route on this site was canceled two years ago and just came back three months ago. I guess the city can put a site, a bus route, anywhere they want to.
Thank you, Nancy.
Next speaker, Veronica Hawkins.
Good afternoon. My name is Veronica Hawkins. And I'm glad to meet some of y'all, but I might have a bad answer was not answered last night when y'all came over. That is not suitable at all, and we do have a verse to be heard. And I feel like that y'all should hear, y'all want us to hear y'all, y'all need to hear us. Let us be heard. And I'm standing for a scene over at Wyndham Place. I feel like that, no matter what you all say, well, we say, it don't matter to y'all, and that's wrong. And I feel like that we should be heard. We don't want to be put out of our place at all. We love being there, but yet, I don't think it's right to set these people there on the property near us, all children. There's a daycare on one side of us, and there's one over there in Cottonwood. And that's not right. That's too close for comfort. Somebody's got to speak up for these kids, not just only for us, any citizen. And it's not being fair to us at all.
Thank you.
David.
Hello, my name is David Davila. I live over there in Wyndham Place. I'm in Ward One with David. We, we talked about a lot of issues. I, myself personally, have known about people with hard luck, people with mental illnesses. I worked at Griffin for 19 years, so I understand that everybody needs love, everybody needs a connection where to get their medications, but it's not just happening. A lot of this is probably mental health that needs to be looked at because there's not enough mental health centers or local places where they can get their medication, so they wander around looking for a place, being kicked out from here. "You're too messy, you guys don't clean up, you guys this, you guys that." Well, that's fine and dandy. Let's find a place. There's a lot of places that they can go, whether it's Griffin and see if we can get a hold of mental health and they can do some deals. There's buildings there, there's land there, there's supermarkets there, there's everything there, just as close as where we're at. It's nice that where they want to build it, yeah, there's a supermarket, a liquor store, and other businesses that they'll like, I'm sure. You know, and if you guys want them in your backyard, that's fine. Put them in your backyard, but something needs to be looked at, you know? Look at some other models from other cities. We have, I don't want to just call them homeless, I guess people that are hard on their luck. We have to do something with them, and, yeah, I don't like them being in my backyard either. But if it's going to be, I guess it's going to be, and I guess we'll have to do what we got to do, and you guys will pretty much do what you're going to do. So I hope we can come up with a resolution with this.
Thank you. Okay, are there any final comment? Well, actually, I did want to ask, would it be a good time to ask staff to?
Sure.
I did want to ask if Lisa Craig, if you might comment about the funding, where it's coming from, and how it would be developed to answer one of the questions that was asked.
Lisa Craig, CDBG Grants Manager. As most of you are aware, the City of Norman is what's called an entitlement community with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The funding for this project is coming from two different awards that the city has received. We receive an annual appropriation of home, which stands for Home Investment Partnerships, of about $500,000. That is specifically for the development of affordable housing. In addition, during the COVID years, we received ARPA funds from the Home Program also of $1.5 million. Those funds were rather restrictive as to what we could do with them in that we had to target the funds to address homelessness in a permanent housing sort of way. And so, the allocation plan that was developed was a template that HUP provided, which we, we worked through several different scenarios, and it was determined that permanent supportive housing was the highest and the best use for these funds. Those funds were awarded with a use-or-lose, for the lack of a better word, date of 2030. And so, as, as we have talked, it has taken us many years to find a site. This is the third site that we have, we have looked at. The 221 Triad was identified, and we're under contract for that. We have worked with Mr. Golden on this site for many, many years. Karen and I have talked to him back and forth about possibly developing this site as permanent supportive housing. He approached us several months ago, saying that he was willing to work with us, and we did another appraisal, we came to an agreement on the purchase price, and that's where we are today.
Might hang out. I think there might be some other questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Yeah, my question was for Lisa. I know we discussed the types of folks that would qualify to live here, and just because it's permanent supportive housing doesn't necessarily mean somebody doesn't get more stable and actually moves into a place like Wyndham or other apartments in the area, correct?
Yeah. Permanent supportive housing is a unique combination of permanent housing with available support services. As persons are exiting homelessness, there are a lot of life skills that need to be relearned, budgeting, job training, things like that. Assistance will be given to address mental health concerns, substance abuse concerns. What has been, been shown over the years is as people become more comfortable in, in working the life skills and the job training, that a lot of times, they want their own place. And with permanent supportive housing in a situation like this, there are, there are opportunities for housing that, you know, if someone applies and receives Section Eight, then they're going to go try to find a unit that will accept Section Eight. And one of the big hurdles is that they do not have a rental history. What permanent supportive housing such as this is a little bit lower barrier because you do have a landlord that understands the situation. It's not that they're going to overlook everything that has occurred in their past, but there will be a tenant selection plan that lays out the criteria for becoming a resident there because it will be funded with Section Eight project-based assistance. That means that persons that are registered sex offender or have been convicted of cooking meth in a federal housing unit do not qualify. There will be background checks. It's not low barrier like you see at a friend's house. You know, the people that will be going to this facility will be screened. There will be rules, they will have a lease, they'll have all the rights of landlord-tenant laws, but there will be expectations of behavior to be there. And a lot of times, what we see in the other permanent supportive housing units that we have is this, this becoming more aware of your opportunities in life once you have become stable. You can stay there as long as you want, the lease is renewable, or you can elect to enter the private market, so.
Also in line with folks moving through the systems, as it were, we don't have a lot of permanent supportive housing in Norman, do we?
No. We have 25 units? About 25 units, scattered site throughout the city.
Is there an estimate of how much we should have? Or are we expecting that for the pro-housing grant?
A lot more. You know, our point-in-time count was 250 or something like that. A large portion of those meet the definition of chronic, meaning that you have been homeless a year or more, four or more times in three years, constituting a year, with a disabling condition that has been diagnosed. And so, when you look at that population, the obstacles to overcome to permanent housing, it could be patched together, certainly. But this, this is an opportunity for 12 to 20 units that will have safe, secure housing at an affordable rate with available supportive services.
And then, to speak to community concerns, what are ways residents in the area can work with the city? Maybe like about the operator, or what are their opportunities?
So, through this process, we will be issuing a request for proposals from operators that will be technically the leasing agents' managers of these facilities. And we have invited members, you know, a member from the Wyndham community to be able to sit on that community with us to help us to develop that RFP so they can see the details that these agencies that put a proposal will be able to answer to. The RFP will have the minimum standards that we will be requiring from these operators. They will then propose to us how they will meet those standards.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Grant. You actually asked a lot of the questions that I wanted to pose, so I guess what I will be doing is mostly making a comment. But throughout my time in Norman and seeing our situation with the unhoused, people grow. And I understand the burden that it puts on business owners and property owners, and there are, we hear those complaints all the time. And, you know, there's a shortage of all types of housing in Norman, but there's no more shortage than there is with single-resident occupancy and affordable housing, where we can help move people into better situations. And we see a lot of activity at our homeless shelter, and we have made progress with our new operator. And they are making progress every day with the people who come in and seek their services. And I've said it numerous times before, for as many things that lead to a person being unhoused, whether those are catastrophic events in their lives or things that are out of their control, the solutions for those types of things that a community make, can make, are just as numerous. And this is a step that we can take, one of many, many steps that we still need to take to start seeing some active progress in this area of our town. There will, this isn't going to be a homeless shelter. This is going to be one of the next steps in helping unhoused people find that pride of ownership and become part of a community. You know, I hear concerns about the daycare in that area. There's people that are experiencing unhoused lifestyle right now that have children that will be able to go to that daycare because they live in that close proximity to it. Yes, we can make bus routes wherever we want them to go. That's what the city does. So, you know, I, what our collaborative applicant said, "Don't let perfect be the enemy of great." There are going to be a lot more steps that we need to take to make progress with this type of situation in our city. And I will be a very happy yes to approve this land that our staff, our very excellent staff, have spent lots and lots of time researching and putting together for us to have the opportunity tonight. So, thank you, guys.
Councilmember Gansberry.
Yes, I'd like to basically thank everybody for their time also. The one reason why I requested this to be moved off of consent is that every one of y'all that took time out of your busy night tonight to come here could have a chance to explain your side of this story. And it is true that we went yesterday, met with people at Wyngam, and had a great time, learned a lot. We're going to learn more from them. We're going to learn more about what their needs are moving forward. But I truly believe this is a project that is definitely needed. And Crimson Flats, if y'all don't know, is another 70-unit of this same kind of project that's going in my backyard, and I'm glad that it's in my backyard. You know, because I know the type of clients that serve firsthand. I know the lady elderly that's homeless right now that, in the last month, broke her back. And she's having to go from shelter to shelter right now with nowhere else to be because she literally can't move around. That lady would be the type of client that we're able to get in this housing. And get her in a safe place with safe resources, with safe people come checking on her, back behind the great Thunderbird Clubhouse with all their members, their beck and need to give all their expertise to help her. So, I just wanted you to know that, I just want to make sure that all of us got heard tonight.
All right, and I would just add that I also really appreciate the residents for inviting us, organizing that, Councilmember Dixon and Gansberry, and city staff for being there. And just to reiterate that this item is a land purchase. There will be several other items associated with this project that will have to come before council, and there will be public hearings as far as contracts with an operator, as far as rezoning for the property. So, this is just the beginning of the discussion, and I have full confidence that Councilmember Gansberry will be staying in close contact with the residents in his ward and would encourage all of you to please and would encourage all of you to please feel free to reach out to us anytime as well. Okay, Councilmember Nash.
Sorry about that. I tried hitting the thing earlier and gave it one last go and it actually worked. Yeah, of course, it's been kind of discussed already. There's been a lot of misconceptions over what this thing is. And it's not like a homeless shelter. In fact, if anything, it'll all but guarantee that a homeless shelter isn't going to go in that area because we don't want to have like a friend's house right next to one of these permanent housing situations. People that are going to be here are going to be, you know, imagine an unhoused person that's the most deserving of our help. We imagine people that are working really hard trying to get back on their feet, off the streets, whatever it was that got them off, out of their homes to begin with. That's the kind of people that's going to be in here. It's not going to be the, in fact, this isn't going to have much of an impact downtown. This isn't going to be those, you know, the more transient sort of people. There's going to be, you know, a set of standards, background check, no sex offenders, obviously, and the meth convictions. But then the natural question is, what if? What if there is somebody that moves in that's a, that causes problems? Do we know anything about the eviction criteria yet, or is that something that's still to be written? It's like if there is somebody that's causing problems, do we know what, like, a couple of phone calls to the police would end up getting them evicted from the unit, or?
Lisa Craig does have some insight, as does Karen Canavan of the Norman Housing Authority. Those leases are yet to be created, but the criteria will be established that will provide for the removal or the cancellation of that lease if the rules are not adhered to. And plenty of oversight happening on the property. It'll be actively managed.
Is there an opportunity for any of the residents of Wyndham to have a voice in crafting that criteria? Or is that totally in the hands of?
So the best opportunity for input is in the development of the RFP for that operator and then the screening of those applicants to help pick the correct operator. At that point, we would work cooperatively with the operator in the design of the facility and all those rules of engagement.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I really have anything else to contribute to the conversation that hasn't already been brought up. I just want to reiterate the fact that this isn't the, you know, the shelter situation that I think a lot of people have in their heads when they look at this item and this use. This is a completely different situation. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay, any, no more final comment from council? Yes. State your name and where in town you live.
Two, Russell Rice, Ward Two, co-founder of Norman Caravans. I'm not speaking for Norman Caravans. There are entirely too many people in this room that agree to this, that don't normally agree to things. That alone should make you say yes. We got Lisa Craig. Raise your hand, Karen. Everybody here agrees this is the right thing to do. It's what we've been begging for, for years. So I am a yes on this personally. Also, whenever you house somebody, they're no longer homeless. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the contract. And councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Cast, and the motion to approve the contract passes unanimously.
Okay, the last item on the agenda this evening is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meetings Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed at the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we'll start with John Scammyhorn.
And my council member, David Gansberry, thank you for getting this item moved to the agenda. I am Dr. John Scammyhorn, retired chemical engineer. I have lived in Ward One for forty-four years. It's a nice place to live. It's primarily a working-class neighborhood where neighbors watch out for each other, sort of that I grew up in. The climate is endangered, though, by this initiative of permanent supportive housing, as we've heard from some of the residents of Wyndham. The current issue today is the building units for the chronically homeless on Triad Village Drive, adjacent to the senior housing and close to Children's Pay Ground. Ward One residents do not want publicly-funded homeless enclaves in any form. We observe the damage a friend's house has done to residences and businesses in Ward Four and don't want Ward One to go that way. And I understand there's a big difference between a friend's house and the current permanent supportive housing. The elderly are arguably our most vulnerable population. And I go to the senior center almost every day, so I deal with people in that category a lot. And I've learned a lot about them. This council should be working to let these seniors have a comfortable, stress-free retirement, not inviting stressful factors like publicly-funded vagrants living next door. The council has approved beneficial initiatives in the past, like the Wellness and Education Center, aka the Senior Center. This is an example of good policy for seniors compared to permanent supportive housing. Imagine elderly resident using a walker terrified to leave her apartment because she is besieged by aggressive panhandlers. I haven't heard anything about how we can avoid the residents of this new unit from panhandling. I shop at Homeland. It's my primary grocery store, and I can see that parking lot becoming full of people panhandling because of this. Ward One is just the start. There is a plan for these PSH units to be spread around Norman as properties become available to purchase for this purpose. I am one of many following the PSH efforts to inundate our city with homeless housing. Norman is letting the several hundred vagrants in our community hold more than a hundred thousand residents hostage. It's time to prioritize the interests of the honest, hard-working citizens of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Munson.
Hi, I'm Dan Munson from Ward Seven. You guys have a council retreat coming up. One of the things I'd like to be considered for discussion is if the entertainment district is going to move forward, that we start discussing a entertainment tax for the UNP. That tax could be used to purchase a two-hundred-and-thirty-foot aerial lift fire truck. This apparatus would be used for the Embassy Suites, the airports, the arena, and other tall structures in Norman. We need additional revenues to support a clean and safe entertainment district. In November, the state of Oklahoma will no longer be patrolling I-35. This means that we're going to need additional police officers to support traffic control and collisions in and out of the entertainment district and on I-35. On a different note, Jason's team has done an excellent job maintaining Legacy Park. A fabulous job. It looks great. I'd like the rest of the UNP to follow their lead. The amount of potholes, cracks in pavement, dead trees, unkept landscaping in the UNP is simply disappointing. Residents in Norman diverted millions of dollars in revenue to the UNP from other high-priority projects. I think we should have an ordinance that holds the property owners accountable for maintaining their properties at a high level, like we do for Legacy Park. So if you were to drive to the UNP, this is a drainage ditch and it's missing slats. That's dangerous. You could fall in that and get injured. This is a tree right outside of the Guitar Store. To me, it looks like it's diseased. There's a tree neighboring it. It looks just like this. And so it looks like the disease went from this tree to this tree. My question is, what happens if that disease spreads over to Legacy Park? Who's responsible to replace all the trees after we have to cut them down from disease? That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Richard Baxter.
Good evening. My name is Baxter, founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. Of course, you know, black is white is stinky. Got the skunk. Congratulations to the new regime change. I'm kind of upset with you guys, though, because I wasn't kept in the loop and I missed the ceremony. And so I'm kind of upset. I thought it was going to be today. And, you know, so keep me in the loop, all right? Let's talk about the joke of the day. So I had a joke. I'm looking at you, Nash. I had a joke about pizza that I was going to tell, but it's kind of cheesy. Did you get it? All right, all right. So we'll just do one. We got some laughs. We got some laughs, almost. We didn't get there, Nash. Okay. I just wanted to say that I'm here, willing, ready, and able to work with the new regime. I thank you guys for dedicating your time to public service and your community, and I want to do the same, so thank you. All right.
Mayumi Winler.
Hello, Mayumi Winler, Ward Two. A couple of things. On number eighteen, about the relocation of aquatic rodents, I'm wondering, where do they relocate them to? And then that whole thing, I understand why they need to be removed from wherever they're building their dams. They're going to cause issues for the stormwater. So then that goes into the flooding that has been going on in Texas, which is really, really scary. And a lot of Norman is in the floodplain. We are very low. There are lots of places that flood. I have, like, walked through Lanes Park when it's raining and the water coming through that creek thing there, it's like scary fast. And so I'm just wondering, what kind of preparations does the city have for flooding? Do we have any warnings for, hey, it's flooding? People like there should probably not be there? I don't know. Then the next thing, I have asked about the idea of boarding houses before. And it occurs to me, the Greek houses, those are essentially boarding houses, right? What kind of zoning do the Greek houses have? And is that something that could be used for possibly more supportive housing? Thanks.
Thank you.
Mary Catherine.
Ward One, Breath of Fresh Hair. Yes. Okay, so I am here to spread sunshine. I just really, I want to express my gratitude for two things. One, I was really proud and moved to tears when I saw that members of the Norman Fire Department are assisting in Texas. I think that that is really a star in the crown of Norman, and I am super proud about that. And if there are any extras, and they want to go to my home state of New Mexico and assist in Ria dosso, which is experiencing Guadalupe River-like flooding at this very moment, I would love to see that happen as well. But what I really want to do is express my gratitude for Norman's transit system. Many of you have been bored to death with the story of the loss of my car last year due to an alternator that was extremely expensive to fix and spending seven weeks without a car and having to get to my job in Oklahoma City. And at that point, I became very familiar with Bus Twenty-Four that takes me to my job three to four days a week. And I became very familiar with the Bus, with 112 bus and the 111 bus. And I am extremely grateful to have those as an option to get myself around. I have a car with two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand miles on it, and I do everything I can do to keep that car parked in my driveway. We have a great transit system in Norman. Many would argue that it's not big enough and it needs more routes, and I'm not going to argue against that. But the dollars are finite, and I just want to commend Public Works. I want to commend the council. I want to commend the people that were involved in really putting together a great transit system. By the way, the 111 bus has been on that route since 2020. It's a great route. So I want to issue my semi-annual challenge to come ride the bus with me. Pick a spot you want to go, pick a spot you want to meet, and we'll go ride the bus. I would love some of you to come ride the bus with me. We have great bus drivers, and there are amazing, wonderful, fun people on those buses. Every day, I meet somebody new, and it is fabulous. Please think about just getting on a bus in Norman. You can't get lost in this town. Shoot, call me. I'll come pick you up if you get lost. Also, I want to express my gratitude to Taylor. Taylor takes my phone calls. He takes my emails. I have, I might have a question. I've called Taylor to complain about a bus that didn't stop and pick me up on my way to Oklahoma City. I've expressed concerns about the safety of a person in a wheelchair because OKC Embark didn't replace a part on the bus as quickly as I would have liked them to. Taylor is always pleasant. He is always calm, and he always has the information. And so I just want to be a citizen that comes to you and expresses my gratitude for the things that the people that work for our city do to help make our lives better every day. And seriously, come ride the bus with me. We will have so much fun.
Thank you.
Evan Dunn.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations to everybody who was sworn in last week. My name is Evan Dunn. I live at fourteen-hundred Garfield Avenue. And, you know, I'm a health-conscious person. And one way that we can all become healthier is to change the types of food that we consume and the locality from where it's produced. So the farmer's market is happening right now, and it'll be happening again this Saturday. And I encourage everyone to come. A couple of weeks ago, I mentioned the need for us to get away from unnecessary plastics. Well, this is something that I got in the mail today. These are ten bamboo toothbrushes. And they're just standard toothbrushes. You get two in a pack. Biodegradable. It's just another way in which, and they're fairly reasonably priced. But it's one more- But it's one more thing that we all need to be conscious of, that whenever we put it in the trash, it goes somewhere. And the more cognizant we are of that, the more progress we'll make. Another thing is I just came off of a three-day fast. I don't know what your I'm not sure what your philosophical approach is to maximizing your longevity. You know my challenges. Well, it's my belief that all of these little hacks, all of these little ways of optimizing my human experience can be scaled up to everyone, wherever you are. And what's the best way to come off of a fast? Because you've allowed your digestive system to relax and to rest for those days. Bone broth. Again, you can get this at every regular grocery store. It is the perfect way of supplying your body with nutrients and protein to ease back into eating solid foods, right? Breath. I don't know how many of the people to whom I gave this, but I don't know if you've read it. I would hope so, because understanding the role that oxygen plays in our lives is so important. Eighty-five percent of weight loss is derived from that carbon molecule that is exhaled. And it's not just one. There's trillions of them that we're exhaling. That has an effect. Here's a book that is written by Eleanor Roosevelt. And in it, she says a few things about the political life. And it says, "Politics can be a dirty business when it operates on a low level. It can also be a profoundly stimulating business when the appeal is to the best in human nature. It is like all areas of human activity and experience, what we choose to make it." Now, one thing is sure. To some extent, he or she who enters into politics will have to compromise. They can never achieve their ideals. They must advance step by step. But they must always keep sharply before their eyes their main objectives. If he or she who's in political life abandons them, they will become a mere opportunist. Often, a politician will have to face a choice. Will you stand firmly for a certain principle and risk defeat? Or will you compromise on the issue so you will not be defeated and will still have an opportunity?
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you for all that you do, eternal business and all things, and see you in two weeks.
Our last speaker this evening is Mary Ann Bradfield.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, thank you for allowing me to come. I am Mary Ann Bradfield. I'm actually a public information officer for SBA's Office of Disaster Recovery. And right now, I am the public information officer supporting the Presidential Declaration concerning the wildfires and straight line winds. I'm also a resident of Ward three, as it turns out, after 30 years in between growing up here. Thirty years in DC in between having grown up here and come back when my dad became ill. So I go all over the country. I need to pay better attention after I listen tonight. So I want to call something to your attention, though. That is, we are two weeks away from the deadline to apply for disaster assistance with FEMA or for SBA's Office of Disaster Recovery low-interest loans for the physical damages done to homes. People think, why SBA? We're actually the largest source of federal recovery dollars through our loans. And they can get a little complicated, so I'm not going to bore you in three minutes. Well, I could bore you in three minutes, but I won't. But I want to really call attention to the fact that there's no fee to apply. There is no obligation to accept the loan if you are approved. And there's no prepayment penalty if you take the loan. We have rates as low as 2.75% for individuals and renters and up to $500,000 for help repair a home for what insurance doesn't and other sources don't cover. Like everybody else, by law, we cannot duplicate benefits. Up to $100,000 for renters, and that includes up to one vehicle. Let's say the wind damaged a vehicle. Insurance may not cover the whole thing. We can help them get back on their feet through these loans. Our job is to try to make the loans and try to make the community whole as well as the individuals. And we also offer businesses and nonprofits assistance. That includes churches, up to $2 million. Now, we also have small business and private nonprofit economic injury disaster loans to help with operational costs if they're having difficulty paying those operations. Normal operating expenses had the event not occurred, the declared disaster, but we have more time. And I'll be back to talk about that. They have until February. That's a little more complicated. Like I said, they're loans. They have to show repayment ability. They have to have a certain credit standard, but we look at the whole picture. We can go up to 30 years if we need to, to try to make that payment affordable if we can. Because in a disaster event, you think you're insured. Oops, down the line, you may not have quite enough, and it happens all too often. It's better to apply for this loan and have it as a resource in case you need it rather than pulling that credit card out at the last minute. We can even help with deductibles. So I would just ask that you encourage people, remember, it's wildfires and straight line winds. And as somebody who lost their fence, I would qualify. So think about that carefully, if you would. And I have dropped the SBA flyers off before, and I'm working, pardon? It's, oh, that was me, wasn't it? And I have one from FEMA. I'm also working very closely with Shannon and Tiffany on communicating out.